Good evening. The Special Planning Commission meeting of July 29th, 2020 is called to order. Due to COVID-19, novel coronavirus and health recommendations from the LA County Health Department, the Planning Commission meeting is being conducted public virtually with no members of the public present. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on local cable TV and is being streamlined online at the city's website at www.glendaleca.gov. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to the appropriate person. Current Planning Commission agendas are available by visiting our website at www.glendaleca.gov. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Lee?
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Minasian?
Here.
Commissioner Shabazian?
President.
And Chair Kropchian?
Here.
Thank you.
Next, we have reports regarding posting of the agenda. The agenda for the July 29th special meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on July 22nd, 2020 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. Next, we have approval of minutes. Approval of Planning Commission minutes of May 20th, 2020. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'll second it. I don't need a second. Okay, we're good. And I think you guys forgot to call Commissioner Matier's name during roll call.
Well, we're introducing him in the next item. I don't know if that's...
An apologies. It appears that we are introducing him shortly.
In item five.
Correct. Yes, thank you.
Next, we have oral communication. Don't believe we have any. Next, we have Board and Commission member comments. I'd like to make a comment. First, I'd like to welcome our new Planning Commissioner, Stephen Matier. If you would, please let everyone know a little bit about yourself and introduce yourself, please.
Sure, thank you, Chair. My name is Stephen Matier. At my current role, I'm the train station manager for the city of Glendale. Been a trained practicing planner for about 15 years now. I've been a Glendale resident for five. And I'm glad I was born here but then grew up in San Dimas. So it's nice to kind of be back here. And I'm really passionate about planning and looking forward to working with you all to, you know, help grow Glendale and make it a great place to live in.
Thank you, Commissioner. Looking forward to working with you as well. Do we have any other comments from any other commissioners?
I was just gonna say welcome, Commissioner Matier.
Next, we have old business. Looks like we don't have any here, so we'll move to new business. We have one item, 515 Nolan Avenue, Lot 69 and portion of Lot 70, tract map number 4881, and 521 Nolan Avenue, portion of Lot 70, tract map number 4881. And I believe we have a presentation.
Good evening and thank you. The item before you today is a consideration... Okay, the item before you today is a consideration of recordation of a notice of violation regarding division of property in violation of the State Subdivision Map Act and local ordinances. The location is 515 Nolan Avenue and 521 Nolan Avenue. The objection has been filed by Mr. David DiGiulio of DiGiulio Law Group. He is representing the property owner for 515 Nolan Avenue. The property owners on record are Mr. Alexander Jackson for 515 Nolan and Ms. Matilda Hartunian for 521 Nolan Avenue. This image is taken from the city zoning index map and it shows the two properties in question. Both lots are located in the R1R Zone, FAR District 2. Are irregular in shape, have frontage on two streets, and feature a steep slope of over 80%. Both properties do slope down from Nolan in a westerly direction. 515 Nolan Avenue is approximately 11,000 square feet in size and it's currently developed with a single-family house that was originally built circa 1930. The lot is described as Lot 69 and the northerly four feet of Lot 70, tract number 4881, as per map recorded in Book 140, pages 32 through 35, inclusive of maps in the office of the Los Angeles County Recorder. 521 Nolan is 8,790 square feet in size and is currently vacant. The lot is described as Lot 70 of tract number 4881, as per map recorded in Book 140, pages 32 through 35, inclusive of maps in the office of the LA County Recorder, except the northerly four feet of Lot 70. In order to provide the commission with context and understanding of the mandatory duties and process that give rise to tonight's meeting, I will go through the relevant provisions of the Subdivision Map Act first. The Subdivision Map Act requires cities to mail a notice of intention to record a notice of violation to the owner of record of the property or properties whenever the city has knowledge that real property has been divided in violation of the Subdivision Map Act or local ordinances. The notice letter is required to be mailed by certified mail, describe the violation, explain why the subject parcel is not lawful under the Subdivision Map Act, which establishes criteria to consider in determining if a parcel created before March 1972 was lawfully created. The language of these sections is provided on page three of the staff report. The notice letter is also required to specify the time, date, and place of a meeting. The meeting is required to be at least 30 days and no later than 60 days from the date of the mailing of the notice letter. If the owner wishes to be heard on the matter and present evidence, he or she must inform the city of their objection. The objection must be done in writing. An objection letter must be filed within 15 days of receipt of notice of the notice letter. The owner or his or her representative must submit evidence 10 days before the meeting. Alternatively, if no objection letter is filed within the 15 days, the city proceeds with recording the notice of violation with the county, and there is no meeting. Now, I will go through the background related to this item, which provides the commission and the public an understanding of why we're here. The owner of 521 Nolan Avenue is currently in the process of obtaining entitlements related to development of the property with a new single-family house and attached garage. On July 26th, 2018, the Planning Hearing Officer approved with conditions and administrative exception for increased height and variance request for development of the site without providing the minimum required setback and driveway length and with stairs projecting into the front setback greater than what is permitted. On August 10th, 2018, Alexander Jackson, the owner of the neighboring property at 515 Nolan, appealed the hearing officer's approval of the variance. On April 2nd, 2019, the appeal was heard by the Planning Commission where they voted to sustain the PHo approval of the variance. During the public court comment portion of the appeal hearing, the appellant indicated that a four-foot strip of land had been added to his property from 521 Nolan Avenue, and he submitted documentation which included images from the approved tract map establishing the lots, the legal description for his property from a preliminary title report, and images from the LA County Assessor's map. This documentation is attached to the staff report as Exhibit 1. The appellant expressed concern that the proposed house was not properly set back, taking into consideration the four feet that he stated was now part of his Lot 69. The owner of 521 Nolan Avenue also provided a property survey to the Planning Commission, which showed that a four-foot strip of land on the northerly side of Lot 70 belonged to Lot 69. This survey is also attached to the staff report and is included as Exhibit 2. Subsequently, another neighbor appealed the Planning Commission's decision to the city council. This appeal is yet to be scheduled and is pending the resolution of this matter. Based on the information provided during the appeal hearing, planning conducted an investigation and learned that the property line between 515 and 521 Nolan Avenue had been changed through a grant deed conveyance without the required approval of a city-approved lot split map. So this slide shows you images from the approved tract map. Tract map number 4881 that established Lot 69, which is 515 Nolan, and Lot 70, 521 Nolan, was recorded on June 22nd, 1927, and shows the property line dimensions for these two lots as approved by the city council. A copy of this tract map is attached as Exhibit 3 to the staff report. On August 5th, 1956, the city adopted ordinance 2862, which established requirements and procedures for lot split maps. This ordinance is attached as Exhibit 4. The lot split ordinance remained in effect until May 13th, 1986, when the city adopted ordinance 4732, which established the current lot line adjustment process. On July 30th, 1965, when the lot split ordinance was in effect, the then owners of Lot 70, which is 521 Nolan Avenue, recorded a joint tenancy grant deed where they deeded to their neighbors, the owners of Lot 69, the northerly four feet of Lot 70. The grant deed demonstrates that the property was sold for monetary consideration and a copy is attached as Exhibit 5 to the staff report. In 1965, when the owners of Lot 70 sold the northerly four feet to the owners of Lot 69, the lot split ordinance, which was in effect at that time, required filing a lot split map and city approval. There is no evidence that a lot split map was ever filed in compliance with the ordinance. The Subdivision Map Act gives property owners a presumption that their pre-March 4th, 1972 lots were legally created when there was either a no local ordinance in effect regulating divisions of land, creating fewer than five parcels, or where the purchaser acquired the property without actual or constructive knowledge of a violation of the Subdivision Map Act or of local ordinance. Here, the lot split ordinance regulating the lot split in question had been in effect for nine years when the grant deed was recorded. Second, the purchaser is charged with constructive knowledge of the ordinance. Constructive knowledge is knowledge that a person is deemed to have of facts that he or she would have considered... He or she would have discovered had he or she made the usual improper inquiries. Usual improper inquiries can include a typical buyer's due diligence investigation of title and whether any governmental regulations prohibit the action. Here, the buyer and seller knew there was an underlying recorded tract map that set the lot lines. The legal description in the grant deed refers to the tract map. It's also clear that these parties would have discovered the existence of the lot split ordinance had they made the ordinary, usual, and proper inquiries concerning the conveyance, which would have involved no more than a visit or a phone call to the planning department. Further, there may be a question as to whether a lot split is a subdivision or whether it actually creates four or fewer parcels. A parcel of land is created by a deed from one owner to another that describes a precisely delineated portion of a larger property and which refers to the land division map formally approved by the city under the Subdivision Map Act or its predecessor statutes. In this instance, the 1965 grant deed precisely describes a delineated portion of a larger property in reference to the recorded tract map. The owners of Lot 70 divided off four feet from Lot 70, thereby creating a parcel of land separate from Lot 70, which could then be granted to the owners of Lot 69. This action meets the definition of a lot split in the lot split ordinance, which means it was done in violation of the ordinance. A lot line adjustment cannot be used in this instance to legalize the illegal division. The property at 521 Nolan Avenue is currently vacant and only 515 Nolan Avenue is developed with an existing single-family dwelling. In order to be eligible for a lot line adjustment in the R1R Zone, the code requires that no additional lots may be created and the minimum lot size must be 7,500 square feet if the original lots involved were created before June 26th, 1986, and there may not be any reduction in the number of lots having an area of at least 12,000 square feet, and all of the lots after adjustment of property lines contain an existing one residential dwelling. The intent of these regulations is to preclude development of large sites that are then split off through a lot line adjustment process into lots that are potentially irregular, difficult to access, or insufficient in size to support single-family development. Here, the original lots were created in 1927 and the minimum lot size exceeds 7,500 square feet, and there is no reduction in the number of lots having an area of at least 12,000 square feet. The last requirement cannot be met in this instance since not all lots have an existing single-family house, nor will they when the adjustment of the property lines is completed. Since the properties are not eligible for the lot line adjustment, the appropriate application is a parcel map. Additionally, staff has met with both property owners or their representatives on various occasions over several months to encourage resolution of the violation through various means. Staff has encouraged the owners to meet together to attempt to arrive at a mutually agreeable resolution. To date, no such resolution has been reached. Staff recommended both parties consider jointly filing a parcel map to cure the violation. Any request for a subdivision will be required to conform to the standards of Title 16, and where subdivision is unable to comply with the required standards, they must request exceptions to these requirements. Additionally, there are also existing improvements on Lot 69 that encroach in the 10-foot interior setback for both properties. This will also require both parties to apply for a setback variance in addition to the parcel map application. To date, no applications have been received. In accordance with the Subdivision Map Act on June 2nd, 2020, the city mailed via certified mail the legally required notice of intention to record a notice of violation to both owners for 515 and 521 Nolan Avenue. The letter provided notice that both owners have 15 days to object to the city's notice letter. The city's June 2nd, 2020 notice letters are attached as Exhibit 7. An objection letter was received from Mr. DiGiulio on June 15th, 2020, which was within the 15-day timeframe and is attached to the report as Exhibit 8. The city did not receive any such objection letter from the owner of 521 Nolan. The objection letter identifies three main objections with each having several additional related contentions included. The first objection states that 515 Nolan Avenue has not been subdivided in violation of ordinance 2862 and that the property was not divided for any reason. The contention also states that four feet was added to Lot 69 and that the owners did not violate the ordinance and that there is no evidence that a four-foot lot was sold, deeded to the lot, recorded, or that transfer taxes were paid. These contentions are false. First, the 1956 lot split ordinance had been regulating lot splits for nine years when the parties transacted the property sale, which resulted in the 1965 grant deed conveyance that violated the ordinance. This also met the definition of a lot split at that time. Here, Lot 70 was and currently is real property shown on the tax rule as contiguous units, from which a portion was divided off and creating one new parcel, which is that four-foot strip of land in question. As for whether or not the real property was on the county tax rule, the grant deed clearly states on the bottom, "Mail tax statement to above return address," which is the address of the new owner, Robert K. Scott. This is a notation to the county assessor to update the property owner for purposes of mailing the tax assessment. The grant deed also shows that the dividing off of the four feet from Lot 70 was for the purpose of a sale. The grant deed evidences a division of real property or portion thereof that was shown on the last adopted county tax rule as a unit or as contiguous units and which was being divided into four or fewer parcels for the purposes of sale. The assessor's map shows this strip as tied to Lot 69, meaning that it was not an original part of Lot 69 and is a parcel of land that was created and made part of Lot 69 through the grant deed recorded with the LA County Recorder's Office. The second objection states that no subdivision occurred and that a lot line was adjusted. The three additional contentions state that no lot was subdivided for sale, so there was no violation of the ordinance. No new lot was created and a four-foot lot is less than the zoning standards and could not be approved. And because no new lot was created and a four-foot lot could not be created and there was no sale, there was no subdivision as defined by ordinance 2862. Many of staff's responses to the first objection do address objection number two. With objection number two, the objector sets up a series of false premises based on incorrect facts to support the wrong conclusion that there was no violation of the lot split ordinance. The split of the northerly four feet of Lot 70 without required city approvals does in fact constitute an illegal subdivision of real property in violation of the Subdivision Map Act and Glendale's lot split ordinance. A lot split map application was required to be filed with the city at that time and no such application was ever made. The letter admits that a lot line was adjusted, but it does not say such a private adjustment of the lot line was approved as required by the ordinance. There was no lot line adjustment process in 1965. The required process was the lot split map. The final objection states that there was a lot line adjustment and it should be documented with a certificate of compliance. The objector acknowledges that the current lots do not confirm... Conform to the lot configuration approved as Lot 69 and Lot 70 of tract 4881. And they also state that a notice of violation should be issued to Lot 69 instead of Lot 70 because it is Lot 70's owner who is currently in the process of seeking entitlements from the city. Again, the tract map was recorded in 1927 and established the only approved legal lot configuration. The current configuration no longer conforms to the recorded tract map and the illegal lot split has never been legalized. A certificate of compliance cannot be issued on either of these lots. As detailed in the report, a parcel map application will be required to correct the violation for both Lot 69 and Lot 70. The owners do have the option of applying for a conditional certificate of compliance, which would be conditioned so that the owners remove the violations by filing and obtaining approval of a parcel map or by reversing the conveyance and restoring the lots to their original tract map configuration. Additionally, recordation of the notice of violation puts all future purchasers on notice that this violation would need to be fixed. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission... Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission determine that the grant deed of the northerly four feet from Lot 70, which is 521 Nolan, to Lot 69, which is 515 Nolan, was in violation of the lot split ordinance and that staff be directed to proceed with recording a notice of violation on the property located at 515 Nolan Avenue. A motion to that effect is included with this report as Exhibit 10. In the event the Planning Commission determines there has been no violation of the Subdivision Map Act and local ordinances, an alternate motion is attached as Exhibit 11 that directs staff to mail a clearance letter to the owner of 515 Nolan Avenue. That concludes my presentation. I'm sure there are questions and staff is available to answer them. Thank you.
Do we have any questions from the commissioners prior to public comment?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I have a question. So when you issue this notice of a violation, what happens after that? And does it go back to that 1927 recording? That there was never a this four-foot split or lot line adjustment?
Commissioner Lee and members of the Planning Commission, this is Jillian Van Miden, Chief Assistant City Attorney. What the notice does is it puts the public, the world, on notice, actual notice, that there was a lot adjustment that was accomplished without the benefit of a city approval. And what it requires is that in order for either of the property owners to proceed with any subsequent entitlements, development on the site, that violation would need to be fixed. As described by Vista, the remedy for that is one of two things, and that is either to roll back and rescind the illegal grant deed, and it is actually void under the Subdivision Map Act, or to file a parcel map, since these lots are not susceptible under our current code to having this remedied through a lot line adjustment process. So it does not do anything other than put the world on notice that those remedies need to be implemented in order for any further, any building permits or entitlements to be approved by the city. I hope that answers your question and if you need more explanation, please feel free to ask.
Commissioner Shabazian? Go ahead.
Actually, a follow-up to Commissioner Lee's question. So if a parcel goes back to its 1927 condition, will the variance or the two variances that were... I guess one variance because one was just tied. Will that stay or do they have to go through the process? I know you said that everything stayed, but I know that variance was specifically for the front setback. So what, does that stay or do they have to go through the process again?
Thank you. That variance that's currently pending the appeal to city council, that application would not have to change with... If they reverted back to the 1927 tract map, it would, because that change wouldn't necessarily affect their requests. It would, because that change wouldn't necessarily affect their requests. That answer your question?
You have one more question, Commissioner? Go ahead.
I do. My next question is, in a case where, um, this basically, the parcels go back to the nineteen twenty-seven, um, status. So in the staff report it said, and they, uh, that there was some monetary exchange between the two parcels. So I'm just curious to know what happens because there was some money that was paid to parcel number seven to take off four feet. So just curious to know what happens in that case. Is that some, um, something that the ki, city will be involved? Or is it something that just the two property owners will have to kind of deal separately?
Commissioner Shabazian, Jillian Van Miden again, and members of the commission. That would be, um, up to the private property owners to resolve.
Thank you.
Do we have any more comments from any commissioners? Okay, I'll go ahead.
I have a question.
Uh-huh. Go ahead, Commissioner Minasi. My apologies.
Uh, just out of curiosity, what, uh, caused this investigation to start? Was any of the owners trying to do addition on the property, uh, that this popped up or, um, just curious?
Uh, thank, thank you. So, um, the owner of five-twenty-one Nolan Avenue, the vacant lot, is actually currently in the process of obtaining entitlements with the city. They, um, are currently, um, they have an administrative exception that was approved. They also applied for a variance that was approved by the planning hearing officer and appealed to planning commission. It was at the planning commission hearing that the appellant for five-one-five Nolan Avenue, the neighboring property and the other property affected by this notice, um, submitted documentation, which is included as exhibit one, that showed this four feet, uh, or four feet of, of, of lot seventy belonging to him. Um, and that is what, um, that came up at the hearing and then after the hearing was over, another appeal was filed to city council and it's during this time that we've been doing investigation into the matter and determining the, the, the issues that we're, we're here today about.
Go ahead, Commissioner Shabazian.
Um, I guess thi- this is again an reassurance and this is for our legal team. Um, so one of the options, um, as you said, to, in order to bring the, um, parcels back for them to be legalized is to, uh, request a new parcel map. Um, so if the applicant applies for a new parcel map, again, I just want to make sure that what they have been granted so far, does that stay with a new parcel map? Or is that, do they have to go through a completely new process?
Commissioner Shabazian, members of the planning commission, they would have to go through a new process.
And does that include a new design and basically complete new setbacks and all of that? Again, this, my, my question would be, uh, I know you answered the question regarding the setback. Um, there was, there were some issues and I know that this is going to city council, but, uh, would, would that entire, so the whole process will start from the beginning or will it just, because you said that if, let's say if it goes to city council and city council grants, uh, their variance, then it stays. So I'm a bit confused there. Would you please kind of clarify?
Um, so if, if the, if the owners proceed with the parcel map process, they would be required, it's kind of, I think, two issues here. You have existing improvements from the lot sixty-nine, five-one-five Nolan Avenue that encroach in that four feet that's in question and beyond that. Um, I think you can see that best in the survey, which I believe is exhibit two of the staff report. Um, that survey takes into account the four feet that has been deeded off. Um, and you can see that those improvements still encroach. So that would be the, they would be required to both obtain variances for that. Now for the development for five-twenty-one Nolan Avenue, they would have to start over. They would have to revise their drawings to take that four feet back essentially. Um, it may not affect their design. Um, the appeal that's currently pending for city council review would then, you know, it would no longer, it would be something that I, I think would have to be withdrawn. Um, sorry.
Members of the, of the commission, Jillian Van Miden, there are two options for that appeal. One would be that the applicant could work out a, an arrangement, uh, with the neighbor for the, uh, filing of a parcel map application. Um, or, um, uh, the appeal could move forward and based on the information that we've provided, there is no legal way for the city to approve or disapprove those variants, the, the, uh, the variants. Um, so it would, uh, have to reject or actually disapprove, um, the application. So it could move forward, but, um, it, that would sort of be a moot process in that there is no capability to, one way or the other, allow for either parcel to, um, obtain it entitlements at this point in time. So we have previously advised the property owner of five-twenty-one to consider withdrawing their application, which would moot the appeal.
Thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Commissioner Minasi.
This may be the better question for after public comment, but it seems like from the staff's report that there is a process forward. So I guess if, if the applicant's called in, can we hear from them on why that process isn't palatable or what, what is the problem with that? Because it seemed like it's fairly straightforward, at least procedurally, to resolve this. And so I'm just curious what the issues are there.
Um, I would echo that. I'm curious as well. And if we don't have further comments, I'd like to hear what we have, uh, on the phone prior to making additional comments. Uh, and it looks like no one else is raising their hand. So on line one, we have the owner of five-twenty-one, or sorry, five-fifteen Nolan Avenue, I believe. Um, and her name is Matilda Hartunian.
Yes, hi, Matilda.
Hi, Matilda. Go ahead.
Uh, we actually have our lawyer on the line too. Um...
Um, am I able to put them both on at the same time? I see it here that Nader, Nader attorney for the owner of five-one-five is on line two. Uh, Matilda, would you like me to switch?
Yes, please.
Okay, thank you. Am I supposed to press speaker on that one? I don't believe we have anyone on the line.
What line is the owner on?
Two.
Two, they'd have to call back.
Uh, could you please call back on line two? We no longer see you here. In the meantime, should I go back to line one or just wait?
She's, she can speak.
Yeah, she can speak if you'd like.
Oh, here we go.
This is Nader. I don't know if you can hear me.
Hey, Nader, we could hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, great. The moment that you switched over to me, line two, I got hung up on for some reason, but that's okay. Here we are. Uh, good afternoon to the planning commission. Uh, my name is Nader. I'm the attorney for the owner of five-twenty-one, Matilda Hartunian. Um, I just wanted to add, I think the inquiry was, you know, what are we doing steps to move forward? Um, the owners of five-fifteen, uh, by way of their attorney and counsel, as well as myself, have engaged in mediation to kind of wrap our heads around this issue and the pending matters. And, uh, we've kind of drawn up some sort of, uh, idea of what we want to do going forward, but we really needed the insight of today's hearing, um, through the planning commission meeting to figure out what we could do in steps to progress, uh, the process and hopefully get the properties in compliance and, and going forward in the right direction. That was our goal and actually our conclusion on, uh, our mediation session, which we held. Uh, and we were able to get an extension of this, of today's hearing, um, as a result of that mediation session. So, uh, channels of communication are open. We are open to working together on the matter. And I think, uh, we just need to explore the several, uh, available remedies, uh, to both land, landowners and then, um, proceed accordingly.
Okay, thank you for your comment. On line three, we have David DeJulio, attorney for, uh, Mr. Jackson on lot sixty-nine. It looks like we lost him as well. Can you please try calling back, uh, on line three? He's calling on line two, assuming it's the same. David, can you hear us? David, can you hear us on line two? It shows that you're on. Now he's called on line three. David, can you hear us on line three?
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Your voice is a little low.
Can the commission hear me?
Uh, that's a bit better. If you could speak louder, we'd appreciate it, but go ahead.
I will do my best. I don't want to be yelling at you, but, um, I will use my, um, outdoor voice. Um, may I proceed?
Yes, please go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and honorable board members, I'm, uh, David DeJulio. My office at three-thirty North Brand Boulevard, uh, Glendale, California. I'm honored to appear at this honorable commission as I have for the past thirty years. Um, uh, we are in opposition to the proposal. Um, Glendale has a great staff and a great city and, uh, we love them. Uh, with respect to lot seventy, five-twenty-one, we agree with the staff. Uh, there's a problem. They subdivided their property. Um, with respect to lot sixty-nine, my client, um, Mr. Jackson, we respectfully disagree. Um, it, it seems fairly simple to me. Um, the, um, but let's go over a couple of facts. In, uh, the transfer in question occurred in nineteen sixty-five when lot seventy transferred four feet of lot seventy to lot sixty-nine. There's no doubt about that. Everybody sees the deed and it's been that way for almost fifty years. Um, that is way before, or considerably before, the state, uh, map act. And so that doesn't apply and none of the provisions there apply. However, um, not before Glendale. Glendale was very early in this process and as the staff points out, had both a twenty-eight and a fifty-six, nineteen fifty-six, um, subdivision, uh, provisions. Um, I called your attention and the staff was good enough to include ordinance twenty-eight sixty-two in your packet. And, um, I know I'm going to sound a lot like an attorney, but that's sort of my job. Um, and in there, they define a lot split as being divided, uh, for the purpose of a sale. Um, our argument is pretty simple. Lot sixty-nine was never divided. So we can't be guilty of a lot split under the Glendale ordinance. Secondarily, there was no sale. While the staff, um, suggests there was one, they have zero evidence. Uh, obviously, nobody knows, uh, for sure what happened in nineteen sixty-five, uh, between these two homeowners. However, the city staff, um, hangs their hat on the words in the grant deed. And those of you on the commission who are lawyers know that it's, uh, boilerplate, uh, uh, statement that there was valuable consideration. So the staff who are, uh, hang their hat saying, oh, valuable consideration, that means it was a sale. Um, as all of us know, uh, valuable consideration does not mean money. Um, civil code sixteen oh-five defines it as a cent, as consideration, as any benefit that one party gives another in exchange for a promise. Um, it could have been a friendly gesture. It could have been a barbecue. It could have been a neighborly decision. It probably was because the, the retaining wall on lot sixty-nine was inadvertently built within four, uh, four feet off of the property line. Uh, and it probably was a consideration, possibly a consideration, a neighborly decision by the two people in the sixties before everybody became litigious and overly, um, difficult to deal with to simply move the lot line, um, and make the le, the retaining wall legal. Um, that's our position and I, I'm, I'm pretty, I feel very solid about that. Um, there is simply nothing that lot sixty-nine did other than to record a deed where lot seventy transferred four feet to them. They didn't, as the code say, um, split anything off their property. And they didn't do it for the purpose of selling. Neither one party did it for the purpose of selling. This doesn't fit within the Glendale ordinance and therefore isn't a real subdivision. Um, it is a problem and it needs to be fixed. Uh, we believe that it should be grandfathered under civil code six-six-four-point-one-two-point-six, which is also in your packet. The staff identified that too. They identified the, the three, um, elements of that. They can, they, um, concede that all of them are met except there's no dwelling unit on the, uh, lot seventy. I mean, the lots are all legal. They're plenty big enough. They're not creating any more lots. Everything's met except there's no dwelling unit. I think that's a misreading of the code. Um, and it doesn't say it has to be. It just says there can't be more than one unit. You can't create more units, not that you have to build a house before you can do a subdivision or lot line adjustment, excuse me. Um, and under six-six-four, uh, point-one-two-six, under B-sex, it says if the p, party buys property, um, without knowledge, either constructive or, um, actual knowledge of the alleged illegal subdivision, then it's presumed to be legal and should be legalized by a certificate of compliance. Well, the staff go out of their way to argue that somehow Mr. Jackson, when he purchased this property, could have or should have researched the records despite title report not giving him any report. The city didn't give him any report. The city didn't record a notice. But somehow he would have been able to research all the records while he's in escrow and find out this fifty-year-old, um, transfer of property and then realize that that was a violation of the subdivision act, which we don't think it was. Um, and therefore he can't, um, use the provisions, the grandfathering clause in the state subdivision map act, uh, six-six, six-six-four-one-two-point-six. I think that's way over, uh, stating and straining the meaning and the purpose of the act. The presumption of lawful creation is that old parcels that were created before the state subdivision map act, um, should be legalized if at all possible. Um, that, I mean, that's our position. There's no subdivision and you can't cite sixty-nine. Um, and we feel very strongly about that. A couple of other comments based on the things we've... A couple of other comments, based on the things we've heard, is that we don't accept the survey that's attached.
Mr. DeJulio, you're running out of time, so please just state the next point quickly.
How much time does the applicant have? I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds. Go ahead.
We don't agree with the survey. It's not a recorded survey. And the lot 70 building plans were building on my client's property or using the four feet as their setback. With that, I would yield and answer any questions.
Thank you. Matilda, are you still on the line?
Yes, I am.
Would you like to make a comment now?
The only comment I have is that if we do agree with the grandfather suggestion that the attorney suggested, that means that we would have to basically go through the process of the planning all over again, considering the three to four years' time that we've already spent on this process and the cost for all the fees and architect design and all that that we have actually endured to get to this point. So the survey has considered the forfeit, the plan design has considered the forfeit based on our architect's suggestion. So I'm not sure where we go from this point on, and we are relying on the commissioner's suggestions at this point for guidance.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that concludes public comment, and I guess just before we go to commissioner comments, I have a question. So our motion today, we're just moving whether this violation should apply to both properties. And if we do so, we're agreeing that one or all of the information stated by staff that disagrees with this lawyer's proclamations would be true. So we would be in agreement that that's the case and that this should go ahead and remain a notice of violation. And that allows them to then either work it out themselves or have the process go through a parcel map, and then the appeal would still go to City Council.
You could break down that question a little further, because we have two. So maybe I can just clarify it by repeating it back, and then if further clarification is needed, then you can ask. So the motions in front of you are, one would be to authorize the city to file and record the notice of violation against both of the properties. Now, because the owner of lot 70, that's 515, did not file an objection, we will be filing the notice of violation regardless. Here, the purpose of this meeting is because we did receive an objection from the owners of lot 69. That is 521. And depending on your decision here, if you authorize us to, that would be a yes to file that notice of violation. We would do so against both of the properties. The other motion is no, do not file a notice of violation against lot 69, who has filed the objection, and we would therefore be required to issue them a clearance letter.
Understood.
That would be the process here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Lee, go ahead.
You know, I thought I was, I got this thing nipped, and then after hearing more stories, I'm a little bit more confused than ever now. Let me just, if we, I mean, I heard what our CFO said. So if we grandfather as lot 69 wants, the lot 70, the 521 Nolan, as is designed going through the entitlement process right now, they are not affected, right, if we grandfather lot 69? Is that correct?
Commissioner Lee, this is Jillian Van Miden and members of the commission. You would be grandfathering the condition on both lots.
So when we do that, does that affect, or does 521 Nolan, do they have to change, do they have to reconfigure there, and then they go through the variance and this, the misof exceptions they receive?
Thank you, Commissioner Lee. This is Vista. So the current plans for the variance, that's currently pending the appeal, they do take into account that four feet. So if you were to look at those project plans, the dimensions match up to what the dimension should be, taking in account that four feet that was deeded off to 515 Nolan.
Okay, so it doesn't change their plans at all?
It wouldn't change their current plans if you were to go with the second motion.
Okay, so if we were to go to the second motion, then this pretty much satisfies everybody, and really, there is no, is there a way for you, from the city, to legalize everything and just, you know, you should just clearance?
Commissioner Lee, excuse me. What the clearance letter would do was, would be to establish that there was no violation of the city's lot split ordinance at the time that the 1965 grant deed conveyed over the four feet from 69 to 70. And what we've established and the reason why we're here is through our investigations that that grant deed was indeed in violation of the city's ordinance in effect at that time for already nine years. And it is clear to the planners and also to the city attorney's staff, who also examined the materials and the information, as well as the grant deed and everything described by Vista, that this violation did in fact occur and that under the Subdivision Map Act that there was a local regulation in effect at that time, that's the lot split ordinance, that was not adhered to at the time of the conveyance. The grant deed does make it clear that there was consideration paid, albeit nominal, under $100 for the transference of those four feet. It was nonetheless, there was consideration paid. Consideration does not need to be in the form of cash. It can be in the form of withholding or doing something that is of benefit to one party in order to support the transfer of property. So on this basis, that is why staff is recommending that these notices of violation be filed. And all it does is put the owners on notice that they need to remedy the underlying Subdivision Map Act violation and would need to do so before they could proceed with the entitlement process that the owner of either property would like to pursue, but at this time, the active entitlement process that the owner of 521 has, that is on appeal right now.
So you cannot justify the grandfather that they're claiming to be then?
Not on the basis of the investigation that we've undertaken and set out in the report. We wish that we could honor a grandfathering in that way, and that would have been the first thing that we would have done if it, in our determination, complied with the Subdivision Map Act. So the two issues there, one, was there a conveyance in violation of the map act? And we did determine in the fact support that that was true and that there was a local ordinance in place at that time. So that is another fact that is true. And then the second component of the Subdivision Map Act that applies is whether or not the owner had notice. At the time of the conveyance, the owner's, the buyer's due diligence was to, first, and most obviously, to verify title. And second, the usual investigation would include confirming that that conveyance did not violate any governmental regulation. And as mentioned by Vista, a simple phone call to the planning department would have verified that a lot split ordinance was applicable to the proposed conveyance of that four feet from one lot to the other. So it has been, it's on that basis that staff is saying that both subdivision A and B of the map act 66412.6 cited in the staff report and attached are in violation. And on that basis, that notice of violation must be recorded. It's a mandatory duty under the Subdivision Map Act that the city, that the city records such notice once it becomes aware of a violation of the Subdivision Map Act or of local ordinances enacted pursuant to the Subdivision Map Act. And so that's why we undertook this process, to give the owners an opportunity both to object and to have that authorization by this advisory body to authorize the filing of that notice of violation. I hope that answers your question.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Just for clarification, I heard the staff that, and correct me if I'm wrong, I just want this to be clear, that the staff did mention to property 521 Nolan that prior to start of their design, that this was an issue. Is that, did I hear that correctly?
Again, this actually did, this issue came up during the appeal hearing when the variances went to Planning Commission. So it does not appear that this was addressed through pre-app or when the applications were submitted.
Even for property number, I mean, 521 Nolan, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Do we have any other commissioner comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Shabazian.
I didn't have a comment, so I'll let Commissioner Matier go.
So I, maybe this is a question for staff and also for the applicant. I guess if the concern is the timeline, how long does it take to get through the proposed staff process outlined? And I'd like to hear again from the applicant why the staff's proposal, which seems to be the legal process, isn't desirable, and what's preventing them from going through that process? That was brought up to their attention.
Thank you. So were they to proceed with the staff recommendation for the parcel map and the variance requests related to the structures that currently encroach between the two properties? The parcel map, each application submitted to the planning department is approximately three to six months to process and get to a hearing. It does depend on, you know, workloads and hearing availability, but that's the average timeline for each request?
But during that process, do they have the ability to remedy this issue amongst themselves in addition to that? Just wanted, okay, understood. Commissioner Matier, do you want to ask a direct question to the applicant or any of the people who called in?
Yeah, that's okay. I'd like to hear from them, you know, what about this proposed process isn't tolerable for them?
Which one would you like to hear from, from the three we have?
Is it, sure, DeJulio, or Julio? Did I say it, or DeJulio?
Yeah.
Sorry, I apologize for your name. I'm sorry. Sorry.
This is David DeJulio. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
All right. And the question is, why do we not want to do a parcel map?
Commissioner Matier, you can repeat it if you want, if you unmute yourself.
Correct. Yeah, my question is, you know, the staff laid out the way to legalize this. I mean, I understand the grandfathering is the easiest way, but given the process they laid out, is there something about it that is impossible for your client? Is there something that, you know, help me understand what the objection is to that process?
Yes, sir, and thank you. Our concern is twofold. One is time, and the other is money. A certificate of compliance is something that can be done in a month or less with no cost to the staff, no cost to the applicant, and no cost to 521 or 515, virtually no cost, a few thousand dollars. A parcel map is going to take a year under best of circumstances, and it also is going to cost a lot of money in engineering, mapping, surveying. And it gives the city the right to require improvements to the property, street improvements, fire hydrants, streetlights, paving of the street, repaving of the street, and that we're concerned that this could snowball into a considerable cost, all of which seems totally unnecessary in these trying times. We've got other things we should and could be doing with our time and money rather than chasing a 50-year-old four-foot lot line adjustment, which could be fixed simply.
Thank you.
May I?
Should I ask him to call in again? That was already his response to the question. What do you guys think? Commissioners, do you want him to call back in? We can all decide on it.
I think he already made up his mind what the question is going to be. He said, I think, his first phone call.
Yeah. I would agree with that. I think I've personally heard enough, based on what he's saying, I don't think he's going to kind of change that approach. Does anyone need to hear more from him? No? And then I guess I'll open back up for our own discussion. Are there any more commissioner comments or questions? Commissioner Shabazian?
Are we deliberating?
Yes.
Okay, so probably comments is closed. Just wanted to, I mean, share it out. So this is clearly a violation of the, of the Subdivision Act, as the staff has been putting it forward for us to see. It is inconvenient to the owners of the property, and as we heard from the attorneys. And it seems that the attorney for the property 69 is willing to work with the property 70, as they spoke earlier. The way I see it, you know, it's, you know, it's understandable that certain steps have been taken, but as going through a project with the city, it is important, or purchasing a property, it is important to make sure you check all your boxes. I don't think giving an okay to this just because of where, you know, the project is right now is kind of fair to the city or the correct approach. And since there is a, already there are a few options that have been proposed to the property owners and their attorneys, and the fact that the property on 515 Nolan clearly said that they would like to work together with the property at 521, I would say that we should go with the city staff's recommendation to file a notice of violation and let the properties, property owners and their attorneys work. That is my take on this, and I understand that it would be a bit inconvenient for the property owners, but unfortunately, it is a violation of the Subdivision Act, and legally, that is clearly, I mean, our staff and our attorney have clearly mentioned, it is something that's put in front of us. So that is my take on it, and I'll let other commissioners speak as well.
Commissioner Minasian?
The owner of lot 70 or 71, Matilda, she mentioned that, you know, if we grandfathering, they have to start, they have to change the plans, go through the process of approval and all that stuff. Earlier, I think one of the staff members said that's not right. They just have to do some minor changes. So I'm a little bit confused which is which.
Thank you. So if they, if you were to grandfather, what is So if, if they, if you were to grandfather what is there currently, which as our city attorney has explained, does not appear to be um, an, an option based off the facts provided, um, the, the plans submitted with the variance that is pending the appeal to City Council, those plans take into account that four feet already. And the, and the structures that are, that are between the two properties. So those plans would not have to change in that instance.
Thank you.
Commissioner Matier?
Uh, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Shabazian. I, I think, you know, one, it's a pretty clear issue. Like, the staff did a great job laying out, you know, the methodology and the approach to it. Um, what I come back to is that I understand the inconvenience and I'm sympathetic to that. But again, handing out grandfather approvals is not great policy. Um, and we shouldn't do it just because it's a long process. Um, you know, I would encourage staff to work as quickly as they can and, you know, and help however they can to move it forward. But again, I, I think grandfathering should be reserved for really special cases that, you know, there really isn't any type of policy remedy. Um, and I'd like to see least applicants work through this process. And if they're still stuck, you know, six months from now, maybe it's something we can talk about. But right now, without even attempting to go through, I think we need to have the, the proposed process from staff adhere to.
Commissioner Lee?
Yeah, I know the public hearing was closed, but I do have one question to the staff. And that is the comment that was made by, I think, the lawyer from the lot 69. That's the one that has that four foot, uh, you know, into their lot. Uh, he was, uh, he was kind of mentioning that, you know, with this new, uh, you know, uh, I guess, recording and all that, that the city will make each property owners to do a road improvements, other improvements, and all these financial implications. Uh, i- is that true?
Now, as, um, as part of the parcel map application, um, there are certain requirements under Title 16. Um, having reviewed them internally, we don't believe things like road improvements would be triggered based off the request. Um, it, it doesn't appear that it would be. That typically is reserved when it is a raw land subdivision. Um, the, we, we did try our best in the staff report to identify what would be required to kind of legalize it as is. They will be required to, to apply for that parcel map and also variances to kind of legalize those existing structures as they are because that lot line would be moved.
So it's more of a procedural things, but not really anything to do with the uh, actual hard scapes type of things that are going to incur some cost then?
Correct.
Okay.
Commissioner Lee, this is Jillian Van Miden. Normally, you're looking to see whether or not there are improvements adequate to support the lots. And these are, as mentioned, not raw land subdivisions. And so there are existing street improvements, utilities. All of those are the sorts of things that would be verified as part of the parcel map process. And they are existing.
Okay, so in that case, then, you know, I'd like to agree with my fellow commissioners. Two wrongs does not make it right. Uh, I mean, we, you know, the staff, you guys are doing a great job. And I think we do need to, uh, you know, do this right. So, I, I mean, I'm, you know, uh, moving towards supporting, uh, if someone wants to make the motion.
Commissioner Shabazian?
Um, I can make a motion, but I'm not sure if Commissioner Minasian or Chairperson Chakchon would like to speak.
Commissioner Minasian?
Yeah, I'm supporting the staff's recommendation.
I'll just brief, I'll briefly state that I'm in support with you guys. I, I believe that it was a violation. I think that's pretty clear. We can, we can see that from what the staff has presented. And I'd like to encourage both property owners to work, try and work it out as they can. Um, and likewise, as some of the other commissioners mentioned, if staff could, you know, really focus on the parcel map in the meantime to try and expedite that process, it would be great. And, go ahead, Commissioner Shabazian, if you want.
Sure. And the motion is that upon review and consideration of the records, files, reports, and all oral and documentary evidence submitted with regard to set consideration of, uh, recording of notice of violation regarding division of property in viol- violation of State Subdivision Map Act and local ordinances, and having held a meeting pursuant to California Government code section 66499.36, during which the owner of the sublet property located at 15 Nolan Avenue, APN, APN 5630011034, property was given an opportunity to present evidence, um, why the notice should not be recorded. The planning commission hereby determines that the property has been divided in violation of the provisions of the State Subdivision Map, MAP Act. And local ordinances enacted pursuant to the SMA and direct staff to record a notice of violation against the property. For-
I'd like to give, uh, Commissioner Matier to second that. So I'm gonna step back here.
Yeah, I'll second the motion. Great job, Matt, for you know it.
Thank you.
Yes, that was, uh- That was a motion made by Board Member Shabazian. I believe that was the second by Board Member Matier, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so in terms of a roll call, Board Member, um, Board Member Lee?
Did you call me?
Board Member Lee, yes. How do you, how do you wish to vote?
Yes, yes.
Board Member Matier?
Yes.
Board Member Minasian? Board Member Minasian?
Commissioner, you're muted.
Oh, forgive me, that's right, Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner Shabazian?
Aye.
And Chairman Chakchon?
Yes.
The motion passes 5-0.
Uh, no other new business items. Next, uh, do we have any community development department updates? No updates? And that concludes our meeting. Uh, unless one of the commissioners has anything else to say, I'd like to adjourn.
Stay safe.
Likewise.
Have a good night.
Bye.